Item 4A is a study session regarding labor peace agreements. And you currently have thirty-one requests to speak, so I'll bring them to you.
It looks like Mr. Harris will begin the staff report. Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Mayor, council members of the public, good evening. I'm Jason Harris, the city's economic development manager. Before you tonight is the study session on labor peace. My presentation in conjunction with the staff report provides information on the subject of labor peace agreements, or LPAs, including the policy issues, potential impacts to small businesses, and policy options for council consideration. The staff report addresses the various legal issues related to this topic. Staff seeks the council direction on requiring labor peace agreements for city-owned properties with food service operations. Very briefly for background, the city owns various types of real estate, including buildings, kiosks, parking structures, and parking lots that are not currently in use for municipal purposes. These properties are leased or licensed for commercial uses that generate rental revenues and provide community and visitor-serving amenities. In total, the city manages over a hundred properties, of which twenty-seven are leased or licensed to food service operators, or that have a component of food service as a part of their operations. A summary listing of the twenty-seven businesses and the square footage of their respective operations is also included in the staff report. The list does not include outdoor dining licenses. The staff report specifically focuses on food service tenants that lease or license property from the city, and does not address the nonprofit tenants or other types of commercial tenants. The majority of leased or licensed city-owned properties used for commercial purposes are located primarily in four areas of the city, of which the downtown, pier, and airport are governed by formal leasing guidelines. To help provide additional context of these businesses, the city evaluated their operations by revenue and number of employees. The Small Business Administration defines a non-manufacturing small business as having less than seven point five million in annual revenue, and the city's and state's minimum wage laws define a small business of having twenty-five or fewer employees. Under both of those definitions, the majority of the city's food service tenants would be classified as small businesses, and are also considered local independent non-formula To understand the city's proprietary interest in city property used for commercial purposes in terms of revenue, the city received approximately seven point six million in lease revenue in fiscal year sixteen seventeen. Of the seven point six million, approximately four point five million, or fifty-nine percent, was generated by food service tenants. The city first adopted labor peace guidelines narrowly fifteen years ago, when the Santa Monica Pier and Leasing and Licensing Guidelines were adopted in March of two thousand and three, and then several months later, the Downtown Leasing and Licensing Guidelines equally adopted the same provision. The labor peace provisions and the Pier and Downtown Guidelines clarify the city's proprietary interest and include a labor peace provision that prohibits all city tenants from engaging in practices that impede tenants' employees' ability to organize and contract with the labor organization for the purpose of collective bargaining. In March of two thousand and fifteen, council directed staff to incorporate a labor peace agreement requirement in all airport leases to mirror the labor peace agreement requirement for concessionaires and service providers at Los Angeles World Airports, commonly referenced as LAX. In August two thousand and sixteen, council directed staff to amend the existing labor peace provisions in the Leasing and Licensing Guidelines for the Downtown and Pier to incorporate the LAX labor peace agreement requirement. At that time, council also directed staff to evaluate potential impacts of the proposed labor peace agreement requirement on small food service businesses. LPAs, labor peace agreements, vary depending on what terms are agreed to between a particular business and a labor organization. In general, labor peace agreements provide workers with rights to organize in the workplace while the participating labor organization commits to forego engaging in picketing, boycotting, or striking. Courts have upheld the inclusion of labor peace agreement provisions in state and local government contracts where such provisions are included as a narrowly tailored means of avoiding disruption of government projects and revenues. Cities that enact labor peace ordinances include New York, San Francisco, Baltimore, Pittsburgh, and Washington DC. In the LAX labor peace model, concessionaires and service providers are required to enter into a labor peace agreement with any employee organization that requests one. In the event a business and a labor organization are unable to agree to a labor peace agreement, the LAX policy also includes a mediation process to help resolve any dispute between the parties. Staff presented the proposed labor peace agreement requirement to the Santa Monica Pier Board, Downtown Santa Monica Inc. Board, and the Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Committee earlier this year. In addition to the businesses and residents, representatives from a labor organization attended several of the discussions, providing feedback on concerns and suggestions. In the discussions, the city tenants expressed concerns about the uncertainty related to the legal, administrative, and operational cost associated with negotiating a labor peace agreement, and concerns were raised that a labor organization would have unilateral leverage in negotiating a labor peace agreement if it is a condition of entering into a lease with the city. Without any contingencies or alternative approaches to resolve disagreements, in negotiating terms of a labor peace agreement, concerns were raised that the requirement could dissuade many smaller businesses from pursuing leasing opportunities with the city. Stakeholders asked whether a threshold could be developed in which smaller, small businesses would not be subject to the LPA provision based on either the number of employees, the square footage of the lease area, or by the type of operation such as mobile food carts. In addition, some stakeholders suggested that the city develop a standard form or template for labor peace agreements to address the uncertainty of the possible terms. Alternatively, advocates expressed that labor peace provisions would help businesses prevent disruptive labor conflicts, which could negatively affect revenues and customer loyalty. There are a number of alternative approaches and concepts that council could consider in providing direction to staff. The first option for consideration is to update the leasing guidelines to require labor peace agreements for food service operators in all city-owned properties and adopt a policy to include the LPA requirement for city properties not covered under the Airport Downtown or Pier Leasing Guidelines to ensure consistent policies and practices with respect to food service operators. Adopting the LAX labor peace agreement requirement also includes the dispute resolution process utilized in the service of a mediator. Another option is the adoption of the LPA requirement with guidelines, in that the city provide as much clarity and detail as possible with respect to requirements and process, such as a template. However, as noted in the staff report, given that the city is not a party or signatory to a labor peace agreement, insertion of the city's specific desires may be problematic. The third option for council's consideration is to adopt the labor peace agreement requirement but establish a threshold for which businesses with less than twenty-five employees would be exempt. This would recognize the challenges of small food service businesses. A fourth alternative is the adoption of the labor peace agreement requirement with a no-strike pledge, similar to the policy adopted by Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. Under any of the first four alternatives, staff recommends that mobile food service carts and outdoor dining licenses be exempted from labor peace requirements, given the nature of the licenses. Council may also consider keeping the current labor peace provisions as-is, given that the provisions in the leasing guidelines prohibit city tenants from engaging in practices that impede an employee's ability to organize and contract with the labor organization for the purpose of collective bargaining. The city has not experienced work stoppages in any of the city properties, and the impacts of labor peace agreements on rental income and small businesses is unknown and unpredictable at this time. The sixth alternative is that council could adopt the state of California's approach, requiring a statement by the applicant that it intends to execute a labor peace agreement or is in the process of doing so. Lastly, council could eliminate the existing labor peace provisions in the leasing guidelines and recognition that the National Labor Relations Act provides employees with protections and prohibits employers from taking any adverse employment action against employees who engage in union activities. Based on the council direction, staff would return to council for formal approvals to amend the Airport Downtown and Santa Monica Pier leasing guidelines and to implement any requirement or conditions prospectively in forthcoming requests for proposals, leases, and licenses. This concludes staff's presentation. Council has requested to provide direction at this time regarding acquiring a labor peace agreements in the city's leasing guidelines and policies for city-owned properties with food service operations. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Council, do we have any questions at this time? Seeing none, I think then we'll dive into the public testimony. For those who haven't been through this routine before, if I call your name, if you're the first, please come up to the podium and speak, and if I've called your name after that, please line up against that wall over there and be ready to speak in the interest of moving efficiently. First speaker will be Donald Tavy, followed by John Groedor, Hunter Hall, Richard Chalker, and Eddie Sevilla. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Donald Tavy. I'm the co-owner and president of Yol Kings Head, an institution in Santa Monica that has served locals and expats and visitors since nineteen seventy-four. We bought the restaurant in June two thousand and five and have witnessed a huge revitalization of downtown Santa Monica over the last dozen years or so. Since the expo arrived, we've seen a huge uptick in foot traffic. This is my first time speaking in front of the council, because I'm kind of concerned about this labor peace agreement. Our leased patio frontage along Santa Monica Boulevard's sidewalk communicates a lot of great things to the passerby. We've got something unique and authentic to offer, and we draw a good mix of locals and tourists, as well as people who work downtown and want to grab a bite before heading home. I've worked in the industry for many years and understand that mutual respect is the secret sauce of good restaurant teamwork, that as well as removing the many barriers possible between management and the energetic staff, employees who are the heart of Yol Kings Head, that helps keeps customers coming through the door. It's a pub after all, family kind of thing, family-owned, family-operated business. So it's understandable that I'm very concerned about the proposed LPA requirements, and I'm particularly troubled that very few people, especially restaurateurs, are familiar fully with the implications of labor peace. I hope that the council staff agree that it's the city's responsibility to explain to us in this room and to everybody listening what labor peace will lead to, which restaurants will be impacted, what does the term "card check" mean, who will have access to employee information, how might labor peace lead to changes to the way we hire great employees and dismiss those whose heart aren't in the job? How will labor peace manifest itself in employee paychecks, and what will it add to the bill at the end of the meal? It's been a difficult few years in their industry, lots of new competition in the area, wage increases, ACA costs, to name a few. Labor peace, if implemented, might be a bridge too far for many small businesses. I know that members aren't allowed to ask questions. That's it? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a John Groedor? If not, we'll proceed to Mr. Hall. Welcome, Mr. Hall.
Hi. How are you all doing? Thank you for having me. Dear City Council Members, so I write to you, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Main Street Business Improvement Association, as the new executive director and an active participant in the community. Our board encourages you to reject the proposed labor peace agreement requirement, as we believe they would significantly harm our local independent restaurants and would damage the unique character of our community. We would understand the requirement if there were a history of protests or bad relationships between employees and local food service establishment, but that's not the case. Santa Monica's local restaurants, and especially those we know on Main Street or elsewhere in Santa Monica on city property, have a history of being great employers. As somebody who's personally interacted with many small businesses and every single restaurant in Santa Monica regularly over the past two years, I can tell you that every F&amp;B operator I know is still scrambling to try and figure out how to best adjust to the unprecedented and rapid increase in labor cost. There have already been several closures, which you've heard about, and there will be many more. On top of that, Santa Monica is still grappling with its reputation as a difficult city to do business in, so why would we want to make that worse, especially when businesses are already struggling to make ends meet? The biggest issue with LPA requirements, as with most things, are the unintended consequences. One example is that every restaurant we've spoken to that has a current patio dining permit would begrudgingly opt to not renew it when the time came to do so if the LPA would affect them, and eventually Santa Monica might be a city without any sidewalk patio dining. Expanding on that, what will become of the pier? Do we want it to be so prohibitively expensive to low- and middle-income families? Slowly but surely, families with limited means would decide to go elsewhere. It's already very difficult to afford to live here, and a prohibitively expensive pier would just make it one more thing that sends our customers elsewhere. Further, Main Street businesses are dependent on customers who are attracted to the unique character of Santa Monica's independent businesses. If the pier and our downtown see more vacancies to begin, they will only attract corporate tenants, and that's a serious threat to Main Street. LPAs make sense at LAX, where guaranteed uninterrupted operation is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chalker, welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm Richard Chalker, and my family and I operate Perry's at the Beach for the last forty-one years. I'm going to list a few of the regulatory requirements that we currently operate under. Our city lease is rather rigorous, minimum wage, which is still playing out, labor board, ACA, Board of Health, and of course, workman's comp. These all speak to the condition of the employee. You know, with all of these different requirements, we really feel that we're already de facto I was brought up with the union, the Teamsters. I've fought for social justice all my life in the Green Party, as one example. So I say to my brothers and sisters in the union, Local Eleven, that you take your zeal and your passion to unionize and find an industry that needs your assistance, because Santa Monica is not that place. And in conclusion, I would just say, the union has put out a solution to a problem that does not exist, at least in our mind. And again, we have operated as a company in the most compassionate and sensitive of ways without any outside requirements on us. We do this because of social justice, because this is our value system, and I hope you understand that this is just not a necessary requirement in our lease, and it profoundly will affect us on some financial basis as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone named Eddie Sevilla jumping up to speak, so we'll call a few more names. Philip Cummins, Greg Marina, Garrett Gerson, Mike Grunig, and Chris Veloski. Is there a Philip Cummins? If not, we will go to Mr. Marina. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. Honorable counsel, good to see you here. First, thank you for listening to us and for your direction to staff to dig into this matter. As some of you know, my wife and I took over our family business in town. We're celebrating forty years as a local family business in Santa Monica. My wife and I are from Santa Monica and most certainly for Santa Monica. I quote Hamilton in saying that "we're sowing seeds in a garden we'll never see." My primary issue is uncertainty. Uncertainty surrounding this matter is of paramount concern for me, my family, and my city. How do I support my family? What will happen to our family business, and how will this policy impact restaurants in the city? Prior to running our family business, I spent fifteen years in financial operations, valuing opportunities, moving forward or not. Why not move forward with a restaurant in Santa Monica, including a potential labor issue? Because you cannot create a plan to succeed when the largest operational and financial factor, which is labor, is immeasurable. What will our city look like after current leases expire or material changes to existing leases are presented? Who will make up our restaurant demographic? Deep pockets? Son of man? Santa Monica will be subject to those who can afford random outcomes and support the necessary infrastructure, or worse, in trying to retain our culture in non-formula businesses. Small businesses will underestimate the risk of operations and fail, resulting in turnover and empty storefronts. Young, scrappy, hungry entrepreneurs, like my family, will look elsewhere. In the end, I fear our public places will be homogeneous, void of character, and worst of all, will be just like every other city. Please take great care in your decision. The soul of our industry and reputation of our city is at stake. As always, I'm here to help and provide information to support your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett Gerson.
Hi. Good evening. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to be here representing my family. We've operated the Victorian in Santa Monica for several years, but really here in support of the Main Street Merchants Association, Chamber, and the other restaurants and leaseholders. Always here to help, but you know, I think something to ask is each and every one of you council members, is this really necessary, and is it a good idea? Thank you.
Mr. Grunig.
Good evening, Mayor Winter, City Council Members. Mike Grunig, Twenty-nine Twenty Nielsen Way. California has the highest income tax in the country at thirteen point three percent. Businesses are fleeing California like rats off a sinking ship and going to business-friendly climates like Texas and Nevada. First, you foist a fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage with benefits upon a non-receptive business. Then you pass an ordinance allowing a select group of protesters to rabble-rous in front of businesses at ungodly hours, causing mayhem as they did in front of the Spitfire Grill. Now you want to orchestrate, manipulate, and subjugate businesses into kowtowing to a vocal minority of almost exclusively non-residents to curry political favor and enhance reelection efforts. Businesses have not had enough, but too much. This is a manufactured crisis predicated on a ruse about potentially losing revenue, which we all know is Alice in Wonderland talk. Where is the great human cry from your constituents? How many of the voters who elected you even know what you're doing, much less approve of it? Do you think people like to pay more because you artificially dictate the rules of business? Why not poll them to see what their thoughts are? It would be edifying. When have we ever witnessed a single instance where more regulation leads to enhanced business and a thriving economy? An ounce of laissez-faire goes a long way to encouraging business development. I had a small business in Santa Monica for almost twenty years, and I know Council Member O'Day has as well. Has either of us benefited from more red tape and intrusion? Mayor Winter and I both walk the self-same Main Street, sidestepping homeless bodies and sleeping bags, and passing by each week yet another shuttered business. There is a tipping point in the business community, and you are putting your finger on the scales against them. Your first duty is to your constituents and not union instigators. Labor peace is an oxymoron. I'd like to think that my words resonate with you, but unfortunately, as my grandmother Callahan said, "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still." Thank you.
Thank you to you and your grandmother. Ms. Veloski, hold on one second while I call a few more names. Daniel Polk, Lisa Gainer, Colby Goff, Laura Houston, and Harriet Bond. Welcome, Ms. Veloski.
I'm Chris Veloski. I'm president of the Pier Leasies Association. I've lived in Santa Monica.
Ms. Veloski, could you pull the mic down a little so you can speak? Thank you.
I've lived in Santa Monica for sixty years, or excuse me, since nineteen sixty. This past September, I celebrated fifty-two years as a businessperson on the Santa Monica Pier, providing authentic and peer experiences to visitors and our residents alike. I'm here tonight to lend my strong support to our pier restaurants that are such a large part of the city's identity, and ask you to reject the labor peace agreement proposal that's before you tonight. The pier has experienced some tough times in the past. We've weathered economic downturns and uncertainties. We bounced back from the disastrous storm of nineteen eighty-three, and now we face another serious challenge. It will affect the very existence of our restaurant's LPA. Bringing all our restaurants under the LPA rule would place an extreme hardship on the businesses that historically operate, excuse me, on a narrow margin. I strongly encourage you to take no action regarding the LPA in the city. These restaurants are working hard to make operational changes to cover new minimum wage, and at the same time, they're handling the increasing cost of workman's comp and healthcare. These are good employees, straight shooters, who care about their waiters, bussers, and cooks. You know them, and they want to stay on the pier. I'm passionate about the pier. I ask you to be passionate about it, too. Please do what's best for our workers, owners, and customers, and decide against adopting the LPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Polk. How about Lisa Gainer? Welcome.
Mayor and council members, my name is Lisa Gainer. I'm a longtime resident of Sunset Park, the mother of three kids, all of whom went to Santa Monica schools. I'm an avid supporter of local businesses. In short, I'm a good Santa Monican. I ditched the World Series tonight for the city council meeting because I feel very strongly about the item you're discussing. I live and vote in Santa Monica, so I make it my business to be well-informed, but this labor peace agreement issue came out of nowhere. I opened the Santa Monica Daily Press and found this article. I was really shocked by what happened at the Spitfire Grill. I was dumbfounded that the hotel workers' union would go after restaurants with city leases. I dug a little further and was very unhappy to learn how far along this process has gone, and how many of my favorite local restaurants were in the union's crosshairs. Like all of them, I'm talking about the sacred cows like Back on the Beach in Chejai, and the cool new places with sidewalk dining and coffee places. I won't go on a boring rant about transparency, but this is a big deal. You're entering into a solemn relationship that will affect all of us. When were we supposed to meet the bride? Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Goff.
Good evening, Mayor Winter and council members. My name's Colby Goff. I'm one of the general partners of the Rustic Canyon Family of Restaurants, which has operated unique local restaurants in Santa Monica since two thousand and six. I'm also a resident of three different neighborhoods, of Santa Monica neighborhoods, over the last twenty-two years, so kind of wearing two hats tonight. Today's Santa Monica benefits from the familiar culture of a close-knit community with a small-town feel, despite being surrounded by the Los Angeles metropolis. By design, we're an increasingly walkable community, which is great for both neighborhoods and boulevards, where independent restaurants thrive. As residents, we patronize our favorite restaurants because they are the places that make us feel welcome and part of a unique seaside town. Santa Monica's locally-owned restaurants have created a special ecosystem, fostered by the direct relationship of the ownership and management with front-of-the-house, back-of-the-house staff, neighbors, patrons, local charities, and of course, the council members as well. Our progressive values and this culture that we've created are the strongest way to establish and reinforce good working conditions. The restaurants that lease city land bring a vibrancy to our sidewalks, city-owned beach property, and the airport. The imposition of LPAs would ultimately disintermediate ownership from team members and would negatively alter the familial culture that Santa Monica restaurants have created. Restaurants and retailers are facing incredible headwinds brought on by market changes in recent local regulation over the past eighteen months. Give Santa Monica's unique locally-owned restaurants the opportunity to absorb these changes and study whether or not there is a systemic problem in Santa Monica restaurants that really warrants an LPA and what it would lead to. It will change Santa Monica, the Santa Monica restaurant community. Please choose number five on city staff's lists and don't make any changes to the current LPA language that already exists in city leases today. Thank you for your time and your service, and go Dodgers.
Thank you. And you must be either Harriet Bond or Laura Houston.
Bond.
Bond. Well, let me just see, is there Laura Houston here? All right, then hold on, Ms. Bond, while I call a few more names, and then you'll have your time. Marian Nataff, Liz Rubin, Amira McCullough, Laurel Rosen, and Matt Miller. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, City Council Members. I just have a couple of things to say about item 4A, and I'll be really quick. First, I read this morning's article in the Daily Press. My head pounded when I read the words "no justice, no peace" that were chanted in front of a local restaurant. The rhetoric of confrontation has no place in a situation like this. "No justice, no peace" is a phrase that should be reserved to resonate and inspire only when a situation is a dire one. Second, I'm not anti-union. Labor unions serve an important purpose when the scale and type of industry warrants their involvement. Frankly, it will take a whole great deal more to persuade me and a lot of Santa Monicans that this potential arrangement between the city and Local Eleven is necessary, fair, or wise. I recommend that you keep... I recommend that you keep things as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Marian Nataff.
My name is Marian Nataff, and I'm a resident of Santa Monica. This is my first time speaking to the council. I'm simply going to ask you to reject the labor peace agreement proposal now. The city is contemplating something extraordinary, entering into a relationship with an outside entity, in this case, a labor union, without consulting the citizens of Santa Monica. No one community meeting, not one workshop. Where was the outreach? Those lease revenues belong to us. We need to know how they're being regulated. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Liz Rubin. All right, Amira McCullough. How about Laurel Rosen? Let's see, someone that looks a lot like Laurel Rosen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm Laurel Rosen, as you said, president of the Chamber. And first of all, thank you for being here on game night. And so, over the years, I have represented the Chamber on various and scores of planning issues, including the downtown community plan, and earlier this year, and then on numerous other significant development projects, some of which have had appropriate relationships with the night here. So you have in your packets a letter that the Chamber submitted regarding the labor peace agreement, which you'll be exploring tonight. I want to elaborate on two aspects of the labor peace issue that we touched on in the letter. First, it's the issue of fairness. The Chamber and many of our members are extremely concerned about the competitive disadvantaged labor peace agreements would create for independent restaurant operators who lease city property. Restaurants that operate on private land would not be subject to the LPAs and would not be able to pursue their business objectives unencumbered by additional costs and rules imposed by outside third parties. So I worked for hospitality for over twenty years, many hotels and many small restaurants, including the lobster restaurant, which I helped open and run for nine years. I also hired many of the employees who are still there today. We prided ourselves on being a family, and we still do. I still feel part of that family. And an LPA would greatly affect the relationships between management, owners, and employees, and impact this really friendly atmosphere that we were proud that we created over the years. So second, just as important, I ask you to carefully consider the effect the LPA would have on the value-driven, long-term vision of Santa Monica that we celebrate every year at our State of the City event. The small, independent restaurants that lease city land are integral to the community cohesiveness and a vital part of Santa Monica's unique brand. I'm going to jump ahead and just say that we wish you would consider all the unintended consequences of these actions. We feel they're shortsighted, and we hope you reject them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And after Matt Miller, we will hear from Sarah Hamilton, Wes Hooker, Adam Fitzpatrick, John Clarizio. Welcome, sir.
Hi. My name is Matt Miller. It's my first time speaking to the council. I found out about the LPA issue because I'm an investor in several Santa Monica restaurants, but I'm here because I'm a patron of far more Santa Monica restaurants, and I'm really worried about what this would do to that community. And so I'd never heard of an LPA before, so I had to do some research over the last several days to understand what this was all about, and you know, I would echo the sentiment I've heard several times already tonight, and I had down in my notes, which is, this is a solution to a problem that I don't think exists here. I'm a big believer in labor unions. I think they serve a crucial purpose in our society and our economy in places where there's a dominant employer or group of employers and where labor needs collective representation. This just doesn't fit that. Santa Monica has hundreds of independent restaurants, and as far as I can tell, there's no problem. It even sounds to me as though the labor market in Santa Monica is pretty tight, and if a restaurant employee doesn't like where he or she is working, it sounds as though they can go across the street and find another job pretty easily. So, to me, it seems as though this is frankly an effort by the labor union to extort something from restaurants, and everybody loses here except for the labor union. From what I can tell, restaurants would have greater costs and greater regulatory burden and oversight. The city would have greater costs, which means cost for taxpayers, and it means more work for you guys, distracting you from important issues that you should be dealing with. And most important to me, it's that a lot of restaurant employees who don't need union representation would end up signing up for it and having union dues subtracted from their paycheck. They don't need to hand that money over to someone else. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you. Sarah Hamilton.
Thank you for being here tonight. I'm here tonight to request that Santa Monica restaurant owners be allowed to communicate directly with their employees so that they can work together with them to create the best possible work environment. While I'm not involved in the restaurant business, I am a frequent patron of many of the restaurants here in Santa Monica. I was born and raised here, and I've lived most of my life here. I'm deeply committed to this city. I love and I want for Santa Monica to maintain that unique Santa Monica, those unique Santa Monica qualities that make it distinct of any other city in Southern California. Santa Monica has become a destination for many, and a lot of that is due to those gathering spaces and those restaurants that many come to. Over the years, we have all seen many restaurants come in and out of the city, and we've seen many come in and stay and flourish here and reinvest in the community. One example is the Rustic Group. They came in and they exceeded expectations, not only in the success of their restaurants, but also in the way they've taken great care of their employees. I know this because I'm friends with several of these employees, and many of them are my neighbors, and they are members of our community. I also know this because Rustic has also invested in the upward bound organization, and they've also taken great efforts to increase those healthcare benefits for their employees. As a Santa Monican and as a patron of these restaurants, I so appreciate the great care that they take of those who work with and for them. And I know that there are many other restaurants in Santa Monica that share those similar priorities, and my appeal tonight is that you allow them to continue to do the good work that they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Wes Hooker.
Wes Hooker Poletti, providing hospitality at my downtown restaurant for the past twenty-six years and my sister café for the past eleven years. Mandating LPAs would compromise the economic sustainability of my business and would likely push me out of the local market. But tonight, I'd like to touch upon two less tangible and intended effects of LPAs. Decades ago, when I decided to open my dream restaurant where I could be of service to a neighborhood, I looked at forty to fifty locations throughout Los Angeles, including Beverly Hills, Westwood, Hollywood. But what attracted me like a magnet to Santa Monica was the welcoming hand that the city extended my way, both at a staff level and at a political level. The executive director of the Bayside District made himself available to address my concerns before I signed the lease with my landlord, and a gentleman by the name of Zane passionately worked out glitches between the prominent construction plans and the restaurant construction plans. Today, an LPA mandate would have the opposite effect of the welcome extended to me in nineteen eighty-nine, and going forward will likely scare away smaller local tenants. Consider also the conflict that a collective bargaining agreement would have on the simple nature of a family business, which is a team of owners and workers sitting at the same table. In this day and age, independent restaurateurs embark in new ventures, not because of the industry's known marginal returns, but because of their innate passion for hospitality and people in general. They enjoy being of service to customers, to their workforce, and attract employees who prefer to be led by on-premise, hands-on owners instead of belonging to a larger corporate business or a labor organization. I hope that you will consider helping independent local family restaurants remain in the mix that you built over several decades.
Thank you. Adam Fitzpatrick. Oh, we have a question. Mr. Hooker, come back. Councilmember Vazquez has a question.
When I went to visit your restaurant, what's the size of your employee base there?
It varies between the shoulder season and summer, so we go from a staff of about thirty-five to, we've had staffs of about sixty, sixty-five between the two businesses in summer.
In the summer?
Yeah.
But the main restaurant, even in the peak, what does that have?
In a peak now is roughly forty to fifty employees.
And what's the range? I think you gave me the range of what you pay, you know, from your dishwasher all the way to your manager there, roughly an hour.
Well, we pay market rates. Entry-level position is the minimum wage, and then there are steps that of about, you know, first step maybe is fifty cents, and there's a dollar raise, and then maybe two dollar raises that are dependent on seniority and productivity, and many other factors, so flexibility and...
And now with the living wage in place, you're on track to get to that once it hits the fifteen mark, right?
Well, the living wage has, this most recent increase in minimum wage is very challenging. We're trying, we're still trying to figure out how to absorb it. The problem that we find is that although the cost of producing the same product that we produced before is higher, there isn't a bigger market for it. As a matter of fact, there's increased competition, so we're dealing with, keeping our prices where they are, we're dealing with flat or shrinking sales sometimes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hooker, don't go away. Councilmember Hemlerich has a question.
So just a follow-up on your employee count. So the forty to fifty number in your main restaurant, is that full-time employees?
I would have, to give you an intelligent answer, I would have to calculate the full-time equivalent of employees, but within ten and twenty percent of those numbers, yeah.
And what percentage of them have less than thirty hours a week?
Without looking at the payroll records, I don't know.
Can you give me a ballpark? I mean...
Usually, the part-time workers are servers, and they compose probably twenty-five percent of our staff.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hooker. And now we'll hear from Adam Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, Council. My name is Adam Fitzpatrick, and I'm a Westside resident, and I've worked in the food and service industry for the last seven years. Fortunately for myself, those past seven years have all been here in Santa Monica, and I've thoroughly enjoyed my time out here. As a college student, I worked at a local coffee shop up on Welcher, and for the past two years, I've served as a supervisor at Milo and Olive, which is a locally-owned restaurant, part of a family group of restaurants that operate here in Santa Monica. My experience here in the local independent restaurant scene has been amazing. I can say that I've really enjoyed it, and it's been neat to see how the community has really invested and dedicated a lot of their time and resources to see local business grow. As an employee, I've just really had an opportunity to be a part of what's going on in the community. I'm not a Santa Monica native, but I've been here long enough, and I've grown to love it and to see how the success has gone. But I'm basically here to stand as an employee, from my perspective, via labor peace agreements. I'll just echo, well, you know, seem to me like they're putting into place to try to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. At my own restaurant, at Milo and Olive, I've enjoyed a really close relationship, not only just with my colleagues, but also our managers and our owners. I feel like as an employee, I find them to be very accessible and approachable, and to me, that says a lot. It means a lot to me to have that open relationship, because if you are familiar, the restaurant business can be very demanding, and I don't want to lose that relationship that I have with my ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Hemlerich has a question for you.
Don't go away. Come back.
Come back.
So how many employees are there approximately at Milo and Olive?
Milo and Olive, I'd say there's about eighty, eighty to a hundred.
And how many are full-time?
Technically, full-time, I'd say maybe about thirty of us.
And do you have a sense of the workers, not the managers?
Correct.
But what the wage range is? I mean...
For most of us, we work at minimum wage, but thanks to the minimum wage ordinance that you guys enacted recently, it's definitely helped us out, and we've been very happy about that change being positive for us.
So where are you now at about? Are you at thirteen dollars? Is that where you are?
Twelve, twelve fifty.
Yeah, no benefits, though.
No, we do have benefits, actually.
Oh.
Yeah, so our restaurant group actually charges a surcharge that's voluntary on customer checks that goes to support our healthcare.
So do you have to contribute to that healthcare, or is it provided by the restaurant?
It's provided by the restaurant.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, though. Milo and Olive is not on city-owned property, is it?
To my knowledge, it is not.
So the really only issue here, you have sidewalk dining, correct?
We do not.
No? So, okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Clarizio, before you come up, let's call a few more names. Nicole Olson, Carl Hansen, Jerry Rubin, and Natalia Zerniskaya. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Clarizio, Spitfire Grill. As I was sitting here at the beginning and listening to presentations from Mr. Lawrence, it struck me that I, too, started in nineteen eighty-six with my Santa Monica business career and have done restaurants and staff, as well as many of the restaurants that are here, even longer than me. And it struck me a couple ways. One, we've been building the same teamwork that everyone was commending Mr. Lawrence on, and we, as restaurants, I guess, want the kind of, the council to acknowledge that, yes, we do do that on our own. We don't need another ordinance on top of us to make us do it. That's how we do it. That's how we do our business. As you all know, I've been the target of the unions. Why me? I'm not sure, other than I'm under a lease negotiation, so I guess I fit the profile of somebody to hit up. But it strikes us that, put on words, that they're hitting us before we've even gone to negotiate anything. And they've come out and preemptively did a strike, which is exactly what you say in our leases, you're trying to prevent, and that's what happens. It's a little disingenuous on their part, I believe, and it kind of gives us an opening to what possibly we're going to see if this goes forward. I am, as you know, against this LPA to begin with, and I think you should reject it as another ordinance that overcomplicates our business lives and our ability to work with our employees. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clarizio. We have some questions from the council, starting with Councilmember McEwen.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming here tonight and bringing your story, and it's important, I think, that we understand what each other are saying. You said that the union implemented a strike, but from my experience, a union can only strike if a place is unionized. So I think what you meant was they did an informational picket at your place of business. That's not a... That's not a strike. Is that what you meant?
Okay, I guess terminology-wise, they were picketing.
Okay, but your waiters did not go on strike?
No, none of my employees are on strike.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Vazquez.
And I know when I went to visit your place, you mentioned that, what's the total employees you have?
We're at now thirty-seven.
And you said, how many of them were full-time, though?
Six to seven are full-time equivalent, where they have full thirty-five-plus hours per week.
And you, I know when I asked you that, you said that's by choice, right?
Correct. Most in this industry have other things in their lives going on, either a second job, school, careers, acting, et cetera, et cetera. So they choose to do that kind of scheduling with us, and we try to help them and create schedules that fit their likes, and it's worked out.
But I notice when I've gone there on several occasions, when I've talked to the employees, especially the ones in Spanish, they told me they would love to work full-time, and it's not by choice.
Well, okay, so...
When you told me it was by choice.
Well, it is, the industry is by choice that they are doing part-time.
I'm asking you and your business, though, not the industry.
I'll elaborate, and I'll let you, what I'm going to say is that in order to fulfill that need of all these schedules combining, it's not always possible to just give one person unlimited hours that they may want, because what's end up happening is, and as people have already talked about, you get very busy at certain points of the day and on weekends, in our case, or other days, and in order to fill that, you need to have your thirty-seven employees. But on a given day, you've got like ten or twelve people working. So you spread that out over a schedule to make it function. And so are there a couple people that sure would want more hours? I think everybody would want more hours if they could have their druthers, but if we're not busy enough, if there isn't enough sales, if the heat like went to a hundred degrees, our business got cut in half. I mean, what do we do? I mean, so that person that wanted full-time now just became part-time. And it's not vindictive, it's just we're filling, keeping the business alive, keeping the service as best we can, and adapting to ever-changing conditions in our businesses. But did that not answer?
No, I think you painted a picture to me that, you know, thirty-seven of them, and you said only six are full-time. I can't imagine that you can't accommodate more than half of them that want to work full-time.
Okay, the schedules don't work that way in the business when you have two-hour windows that are busy.
That's fine, thanks.
Mr. Clarizio, we now have a question from Councilmember O'Dea.
Sorry, thanks for staying. I'm interested to know what the impact on the business was when you had the pickets there.
Well, the first thing that the impact was that the customer base got very upset and started calling the police, which led to three squad cars and three airport security coming out. They started filing complaints, and then within twenty minutes to a half hour, the patio completely emptied out, which was at twelve o'clock on a Saturday. The volume on the megaphone was such that it may have kept to standards of the city laws, but it was, it hurt your ears. So it cleared out the business. People driving by just kept going. I heard some calls from people saying they just saw what was going on, they didn't want to deal with it. So they just, they just moved on.
So it was a significant revenue impact?
Yeah, because it was peak, so we probably lost a good thousand dollars just in that little window of an hour and a half on a Saturday, and it happened four times, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarizio.
Okay.
And now Nicole Olson, who's having time donated by Sean Gainer. Is Nicole here? Is Sean Gainer here? All right, so welcome, Ms. Gainer. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nicole Olson, and I'm a server at Spitfire Grill on Airport Avenue. I work five to six days a week. I moved to Southern California four and a half years ago to take advantage of the employment opportunities available here. I feel fortunate that I found employment at Spitfire. It's a great working environment, the customers are wonderful, and the historic atmosphere of the airport makes it special, it makes it a special place to work. My employer is a straight-up guy who follows the rules. The kitchen staff, the bussers, the servers, and the management work together. We're a diverse and tight-knit team. That's why we were surprised when demonstrators from Unite Here arrived at the airport sidewalk and began to picket in front of the restaurant. I didn't know these people, nobody knew them, and they were chanting "No justice, no peace." That's a call to action that we Americans hear a lot these days in response to real tragedies like unwarranted shootings or major disasters, or when the powerful of this nation harass the powerless. My coworkers and I were simply preparing and serving lunch, setting tables, and topping up coffee cups like we always do. Where's the injustice? The picketers used a bullhorn, which forced our patio customers to go indoors. Some patrons were uncomfortable, gave up and left. Other customers turned around and went to other restaurants once they caught sight of the picket and heard the chanting. The union visited Spitfire three times that week at Pete Clonchours. When it was all over, we were, of course, paid time for the dead time, and we lost hundreds in tips. That's money we set aside for the future and money we pay taxes on, too. No justice for sure. Then the "no peace" part happened. On October tenth, two people from Unite Here arrived at my doorstep. They asked my husband if I was home. Again, I didn't know these people, so it was pretty disconcerting that they asked for me by name. My husband replied that we were in interest, interested, and they pressed on. They told him it concerned my job at Spitfire Grill. They claimed it was about my union. He knows I don't belong to a union. My husband remained calm and polite and persuaded them to leave. After a while, they did, but we weren't happy campers. It was our wedding anniversary, so our dinner conversation just drifted back and back to the unwelcome visit. My coworkers and I want to ask Unite Here why this is okay. We want to understand when the solidarity among workers kicks in, when we sign cards, when we play union dues and fines, when we are told to mistrust our employer. So-called labor peace won't do a thing except to get in the way of small restaurants who form the heart of this community are able to do business in peace. Please reject this misguided proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Mr. Hansen? No, please hold your applause. We have to have an unbiased hearing where everybody feels free to express their opinions.
Good evening, councilmembers. Carl Hansen, Director of Government Affairs for the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce. We submitted our letter to you largely reflecting a lot of the points that were expressed tonight. We do thank you for taking the time to look into this in depth and giving staff the direction to bring back the report that they brought before you, and I think they've done a good job, but I think the underlying problem is not something that they can address, is that there is so much uncertainty, and we are left with so many questions. First, is why do we even need this labor peace agreement? As the staff report says, there's no history of labor dispute upsetting workflow or leading to the loss of city revenue at these sites. And if there is no history of a problem, I hope tonight you will discuss, you know, what exactly is missing from the existing protections in the National Labor Relations Act or the city's current leasing guidelines that seem to have done a very good job and are very strong in protecting our local workers? Finally, you know, is it fair for an employer, you know, to agree to waive the rights that workers have to a secret ballot, which is what a card check is? Is that something we want? Is that something that will meet the needs that you have in bringing this requirement forward? You know, further, is it fair for, or even legal for, an employer to be making agreements with a union that does not represent its employees? I mean, unionization is about the representation of workers, and if this is an outside entity that's trying to pressure its way in, is that a good thing? And it doesn't matter what the size of the employer is, if it's small or large. That's not the right way to protect workers. And lastly, I just wanted to say, what feels so strange to me about this particular ordinance is it's essentially like Mad Libs policy. We don't know what goes into a labor peace agreement, and you're essentially making requirements without specifying what they are, and that's unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Mr. Rubin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Winter, city council members, Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica. Well, as I've spoken over the years to the council, I'm a pretty big union supporter. I think most everyone I know seems that we're on the right track with the living wage ordinance. See how it works out, but it's something we debated for a long, long, long time, and I don't remember too many of the groups really opposing it in the end when it all worked out. I think most people I talk to, even in the business community, are really happy we have a lot of union hotels. The Miramar, a lot of the proposed new ones that are going to benefit our city. I was surprised to hear about this myself. I mean, I've been at demonstrations against Donald Trump screaming "No justice, no peace," but, my goodness, isn't this something that you want to work out more and take a lot more time to work out if it's going to work out at all? I just don't think that tonight is the time to pass something, and it needs a lot more study. But I do want to say I hope that we continue on the track to understand how important the labor movement is and how important unions have been over the years. And there's always fears, and there's always a lot of questions about that, but people deserve a living wage. People deserve a life. I've seen a documentary about something that showed how horrible it can be if you don't have these protections. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, and Ms. Zernitskaya.
You said my name right. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Natalia Zernitskaya. I live in the Pico neighborhood, and I'm involved in many civic issues and organizations, but tonight I'm speaking as a resident. I ask you to reject the proposed labor peace agreement requirement for two reasons. One, it's fundamentally inequitable. The proposed LPA requirement will target a small number of local restaurants, roughly forty or so of them, which lease city property for outdoor dining. It will also capture those go-to restaurants that are located in the middle of city property, and I don't need to name them because we all eat there. Two, it's based on an erroneous assumption. Expecting the worst from restaurant owners in our tight-knit community is a wrong-headed way of making policy. The fact is that the relationships between local restaurant staffers and owners is unusually and historically harmonious. Those relationships are long-lasting, familial, and meaningful because our community ethos is powerful. Are we surprised when we see longtime servers, bussers, and kitchen staff at our favorite eateries? Never, because that's us. That's how we roll. Pardon the colloquialism. Before my current job in the financial sector, I worked at two establishments with sidewalk dining, one in downtown Santa Monica and one at Twenty-Sixth and Wilshire. And listen, our streetscape got its mojo back when chairs and tables started popping up on our sidewalks. So much more pleasant. And the same thing happened with the old beach club property. It crackled back to life when Fred Denny set up shop and shooed away a decade of political rancor and bad vibes on that contested piece of beach. Food heals. And I'm not just saying that because I was hungry when I wrote this. I'm not here to slam Unite Here. The protections that they afford hotel workers and the guidance they give to hotel ownership are priceless, but hotels are large institutions. Owners and employees alike are subject to economic forces that small restaurants will never experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to call some of the names I called before when no one showed up, just to give everybody a second chance. That would be Liz Rubin, Amira McCullough, Laura Houston, Daniel Polk, Philip Cummins, Eddie Sevilla, and John Grodar. Any of those individuals are here? This is your last chance to speak. If not, we'll close the public hearing and move on to council questions, discussions, and deliberations. Councilmember McEwen, do you have a question of staff?
Well, I wanted first to acknowledge the public testimony and maybe just clear the air on a couple of things, because I think I can share some very good news. First of all, forced unionization is not on the agenda tonight. That's not what this is. There was a lot of talk about the relationship between employers and employees, and labor peace is not about that, and the role that we're playing tonight is not about that. And there were quite a few comments about sidewalk dining, which I, in this council, as shown by policy decisions we've made before, dearly love, and I'm very pleased to let you know that sidewalk dining has nothing to do with this labor peace. That has been stated in the staff presentation. And frankly, sidewalk dining, the circumstances of sidewalk dining wouldn't justify labor peace. So I think we need to talk about what labor peace is as opposed to what it is not. A lot of what we heard was what labor peace, frankly, is not. We've had labor peace in Santa Monica since at least two thousand. I think that's in the staff report, and that was the Viceroy Hotel. We have been moving toward labor peace in different parts of the city since then. And in fact, this study session tonight, and some people said, oh, please don't pass a law tonight. Well, more good news, we're not going to. This is a study session, and the study session came out of a council direction that was given by the mayor and one of our colleagues back in March. So, you know, this is not like all of a sudden this dropped out of the sky. This city has been thinking about labor peace for a long time. So why? We are blessed as a community to own certain pieces of land within our city, and some of those pieces of land, and I'm not talking about sidewalks for sidewalk dining, I'm talking about actual buildings for the most part, that are on city land are leased to businesses that are in the restaurant business. The revenue that we get from those leases generally includes a rent and a percentage of what the restaurant makes, and so that revenue belongs to our residents. That's what pays for resident services, or one of the things that pays for resident services. So as far as I'm concerned tonight, the reason why I'm here and want to talk about this issue is I want to protect that revenue stream. I want to make sure that we don't have labor disruptions that interfere with that labor, with that revenue stream and mean that the money that we depend on for the budget, which we'll talk about later tonight, isn't dependably there. I think there are a lot of ways that we can mitigate this to address the concerns we've heard, but I just want to start out by saying that this is not about forcing workers to become union workers. This is not about ending sidewalk dining, and it's not about not appreciating our small businesses either. It's about protecting our community from revenue disruption, and I hope that that's what we will move toward tonight as a council.
So there's no question of staff in any of that? Okay, that's, may I pretend, Davis, you had a question of staff?
Yeah, I do have a question. And actually, so we did hear, obviously, Councilmember McEwen in a statement pointed out that what we're discussing tonight is not sidewalk dining. Is it also true that what we're not discussing are, for example, the carts on the promenade, those what I'll call almost micro-businesses? Okay, so we're not talking about sidewalk dining, we're not talking about the carts on the promenade. So some of the businesses that are listed in the list of businesses on, in the staff report, wouldn't even be affected by what we're discussing tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. The, in the staff report, staff is recommending that outdoor dining be exempt from the policy discussions in that food service carts on the pier similarly be exempted from the policy discussion, recognizing kind of the micro-business enterprise that the carts represent. And on the promenade, we have no food service carts, but in concept, if you adopted the same concept of principle, it would be applied if there ever was.
And then one more question. With regard to the living wage statute, we have a exemption for small business. How do we define that? I believe it's by employees. Is that correct? Number of full-time employees?
Yes, and to clarify, because I think there was an interchange of nomenclature, so the minimum wage is what council adopted just recently, a few years ago, versus the living wage. Living wage is applied to city contractors. So in the context of minimum wage, the definition of a small business is twenty-five or fewer employees. So in the context of minimum wage, the definition of a small business is 25 or fewer employers and employees, irregardless if they're full-time or part-time. So 25 employees, and that's calculated on an average throughout the year.
And to your knowledge, have we seen any effect on hiring with that? For example, and I don't know if we would even know the statistic or not, but that there are no businesses with employees between, say, 25 and 35? In other words, that people are forcing themselves to stay under the 25, to exempt themselves from the requirements? And really, until they get big enough where they just can't function with less than 25, they go up?
So, you know, to answer your question, recognizing the minimum wage, and I think you heard some testimony from some of the business individuals, they're clearly not making that decision to try to stay under the employee count of 25 and fewer. And as such, you would have actually businesses saying, "I want as many of my employees to be full-time as possible to reduce the total number so they would not be required to pay the higher minimum wage rate." Because the differential is if you're at 26 or greater employees, that's the higher minimum wage rate. As you recall, there was a two-tiered system of minimum wage rate. And so, you know, I think just from anecdotal description, they're really trying to meet the needs of both their operations as well as kind of the employees', you know, just, personal needs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Dea?
I just wanted to ask our staff, when, you know, I want to understand that these LPA's a little bit better, and I have had a hard time understanding just sort of what is the difference between a labor agreement on a site and an LPA? Why is an LPA the lighter version? I understand that it's not represented workers that you're signing an LPA with. Who are you signing it with? Who's the counterparty?
So to clarify, so there is labor peace. And labor peace is just recognizing the relationship between employer and employee. And that's ultimately defined in the National Labor Relations Act, which actually is labor law throughout the country. In our existing leasing guidelines for the pier in downtown, we have a labor peace provision. And this explicitly prohibits employers from prohibiting employees' ability to organize. The difference thereof, which is really the conversation at hand, is a requirement that we would require food service operators to enter into a labor peace agreement. And that's an actual form of contract between a union organization and a business. And that would be a condition, as conceptualized through the LAX labor peace agreement provision, to be applied conceptually to Santa Monica businesses, separate from other forms of labor peace, be it labor peace project agreements where you have large construction projects. This is more so in the operational realm.
And so, I mean, what I was reading, as I understood some of these terms, it's any labor organization that requests a labor peace agreement would have, the lessee, our lessee, would then have to enter into a labor peace agreement with that organization?
That is correct.
Could that mean multiple entities? So you could have multiple employee unions asking, and then anytime that any union asks, you would have to enter into one of those agreements? Or otherwise be in default of your lease?
That, to answer the question, is possible that there could be multiple labor organizations that would come forward and seek efforts to represent workers. I think in the context of the West Side of Los Angeles and within this industry of hospitality workers, as our understanding is, Unite Here Local 11 is the only hospitality-based union operation. That my understanding, the one distinction is valet operations are represented by the Teamsters. So depending on how that employer relationship exists, and my general understanding is most valet operations are third-party contracted operations.
Councilmember? Excuse me. Councilmember, my understanding is that the, and I will stand corrected if my understanding is incorrect, that the language used by LAX means that if you have a labor peace agreement, you are in compliance with your lease obligations. That does not mean that you could have more than one seeking to do that. But that's, I think, the obligation imposed by the LAX language, which is one of the options before you tonight, would be satisfied by a single labor peace agreement with a legitimate union.
Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, yes.
Well, then, that's an important topic. I mean, whether it's any or a. And it's also, and how do you, how do we validate whether it's a legitimate union?
Fair question. And in tonight's discussion, since we're not recommending or proposing specific language, we're giving the council a series of alternatives at your request, the exact mechanics of that would be things that we would work out based upon your instructions. If you said, you know, "Here are some things to take into account to make sure that we were dealing with legitimate."
That's why I raised the question.
We'd have to work that out. Again, we probably would look to other practices. As you know, in a narrower framework, the LAX language was upheld by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, that they're not us and we're not them. But we certainly would take a look at what they have utilized, since they have experience and as of now, we don't. But that's a hypothetical down the road in that you haven't sent us down that road. And if you do, we'll do our best to bring back what would be required. And then, of course, you could modify your recommendation. You could say, "Well, that's not exactly satisfactory." But at the present, there's probably a way to set up guidelines that would distinguish legitimate from less legitimate. But it's not without its challenges, as I think people who understand labor history know. Labor unions don't always see eye to eye. Famously, when growers made a pact with the Teamsters in the Central Valley at the expense of striking UFW workers, that dispute led to state violence against the striking workers. So it's a complicated arena to enter into. But as Mr. Harris said, that probably isn't the case here in that there does not, at the present time, seem to be many unions operating in this space.
Okay.
Or many besides one, actually, to be fair.
It's these kind of operational considerations I'm trying to understand more deeply. And so similarly, there is a question as to whether we would define what would be valid in a labor peace agreement, right? Because that's certainly still open to some interpretation. Is there, are there other standards in place where we require of a lessee, or I don't know, a regulated party in the city, that we would ask for a third party, that we would ask to reach an agreement with a third party? Where that third party is not, say, a government agency or certification or something like
Councilmember, I'm not aware of any other third-party contractual conditions we've required any of our lesssees, that they're typically more operational conditions.
Like you have to get a county health permit, for example, right?
Correct. But just general assumptions that they'd be having the business operational requirements of all permits and meeting all rules and laws.
But a negotiated agreement with the third party doesn't, is not something we've done?
That's beyond the traditional laws and regulations.
Certainly not anywhere in our, not anywhere else in the leases.
Correct.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Any more questions of staff? If not, councilmembers, the matter is before us for discussion and hopefully some form of direction to staff. There's seven of us. Surely somebody has something to say on the matter. Councilmember McEwen?
Well, I've looked at the different options, and I am very wary of any option that puts us in the position of deciding what a labor peace agreement will be other than that it protects our revenue. I think we have to be very careful about the fact that it is the National Labor Relations Act that controls any negotiated agreement between workers and an employer or a union. That is not our area to get into. Our interest here has to be figuring out how to guarantee continued revenue from these leaseholds where we own the property as stewards for the residents of the city. And looking at the various options given to us, the one that seemed the closest to what I think we meant back in March when we asked to have this looked at is what our own local school district did, actually. What they said was that you have to have an agreement that there'll be no strike. And they didn't set what the parameters of that were. It's up to the employer and a union, or any union, in this case, a union, to make a handshake agreement or perhaps sign that, you know, "We will negotiate in ways that don't impede the ability of this property to generate ongoing revenue, and that means we won't have any strikes." So actually, the union is giving up one of its biggest tools in that process, because striking is obviously, or picketing is something, disrupting revenue is something that a union will use to get an employer's attention. So as I understand what labor peace would mean, for instance, what has happened out at the Spitfire could not happen under a labor peace agreement, because that, we heard from the testimony, that that affected the revenue of that restaurant for that time. So that would violate labor peace were there a labor peace agreement. Now, what I thought was really interesting about what the school district did was they built in, without defining what a labor peace agreement should be, a safety valve that can give the employer some sense that, "Well, I'm not being thrown down a rabbit hole with somebody who has the power to twist my arm behind my back unreasonably." The school district said that if either party feels that the discussion has been capricious, unreasonable, that it can then be appealed. In the school district's case, they said to the school board, "I don't know that we as a city council want to be taking that on. It might be a third party. We can let that be decided by staff if we do go down this particular path." But I would suggest, I don't know if we need a motion and a study session, but I would suggest that we explore option four that was presented to us in the staff report.
Mayor Protim Davis?
Well, I'm certainly interested to hear what others of my colleagues say. I do have a couple of issues that I think, well, I think option four is certainly interesting. I would want to do something different than what the school district did, which is, I think one of the things we need to do is perhaps make the reviewing party, the party that would determine whether or not either of the parties had acted in a bad faith or arbitrary and capricious manner, of not be a political body. And that we determine whether or not it's legal for us to either hire someone to be a reviewing officer or some sort of function in that job, or whether we designate one of the many agencies that exist that have mediators working for them, like judicial arbitration and mediation services, affectionately known as JAMS, that sort of thing. I think that it's important that if we are going to provide a relief valve, that everyone involved believe that the relief valve be an impartial decider and not a political body. So that would be the one comment I would have about option four. I think the other thing is, we do have, as Mr. Harris pointed out, with regards to our minimum wage statute and an exemption for smaller businesses, and I think that's something we probably ought to consider in terms of putting these sorts of requirements on businesses. I think we did that with the two-tiered system in the minimum wage statute, because we recognize that smaller businesses were less able to absorb these kinds of burdens. And so I think we need to think about that again. And then I suspect the only other comment I would have is that we, this again, and I'm a big fan of this, is, you know, we perhaps in a year, 18 months down the line, get an informational item if we do something like, once we make a decision, and I know we're not making a decision tonight, but that we monitor this and see what effect it's having. And if, in fact, as many of the people said tonight, that businesses are shutting down, I think we need to know that. If businesses are finding that it's more difficult, they're curtailing hours or cutting back on the number of employees, we would like to know that as well. You know, I think there was a lot of discussion about unintended consequences, and I don't think that's talk that we should take lightly. And so I think one of the things we'll need to do as we move forward with any sort of plan is monitor it and see what effect it's having on our local economy and on our local businesses. Because as the staff report acknowledges, this council repeatedly has stated its desire to nurture and promote independently locally-owned businesses. And so we don't want to get in a position where we put requirements on that end up losing those businesses, which are, they hire local, the money gets churned back into our local economy at a much higher rate than when we have chains, for example. And frankly, they just contribute much more to the environment in our city. So if we are thinking about doing something, I think those are considerations I'd like to put on the table.
Councilmember McEwen?
Well, I'd like to convert my initial thought into a motion, given that I've now heard there's likely to be a second on option four. Incorporating into that is friendly amendments, that the decision of arbitrary and capricious be made by some non-political reviewing body, and that, yes, we have a monitoring process afterwards so that we're sure that we're not having the unintended consequences that we've been warned about. So I'll make that as a motion, hoping that the secondary has already spoken.
I mean, I'll second that, but I'd like to hear from our colleagues and see what they feel about it. So I'm not necessarily committing to voting for it, but I'd like to hear what other people say.
Absolutely. But it often helps us to focus our discussion, to have an actual motion.
That's fine.
Councilmember Vasquez?
I agree. I think it's good to, at least the direction we're heading here, to explore this, especially this option about having a non-political body or individual that would review this. Because I know in my conversations with several of the folks, especially the mom-and-pop restaurants that are operating in the city, that I think are doing right by the workers, at least the ones, the majority of them, I should say, that I've spoken to when I talk to the workers, some of them are happy. And I think they would be just as happy without a union than with a union. And I think we need to make sure we protect those folks that are in those positions, especially for the employers that are comfortable in that position or in that role and are doing right by them now. And I think maybe this independent body could play that role. Because I know in talking to one specific operator that was, I guess, at LAX at one point, went through this and found himself, at the beginning, feeling comfortable with it. But then after three or four years, when they were renegotiating, found themselves in a position that was uncomfortable for him, and he felt that he was kind of being forced to do something that he didn't think was in the best interests of his workers. And I think we need to figure that piece out at the same time. So we strike that balance. So I feel comfortable with the direction of this motion at this point.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
So I do agree about the direction of the motion. I do think that it is the correct direction. The one thing I want to be sure of is that we not prejudge who the deciding body should be, that we be given some alternatives as to that. And I also think we may need, after hearing the testimony tonight, some more education as to what this really means, who it will affect, and not only the scope of it, but what are the rights and responsibilities on each side. And I think that that's a little unclear right now, and we need to do more outreach on that.
Councilmember O'Dea?
Well, I think it's really important that we have very clear standards for what we're asking of a lessee here and what... we're asking of a lessee here, and also that the, as Councilmember Hemmerich points out, that it's well-understood by everyone what those standards are and how to achieve them in order to do business with the city. It's important in my mind to have low cost or no-cost administration associated with this work, both for the city itself, that we're not adding additional costs, because this is about protecting income to the city, but also to those businesses, because that's all the same pool of revenue, let's, you know, be clear. And a cost imposed on a lessee is ultimately taken out of the lease revenue that we earn from that lessee in one way or another. And so I think that we need to be careful not to wade into something that leads to significant amount of additional cost and uncertainty in the relationship that we establish with our lessies. And when I look at these options, the only one that achieves that, in my mind, is Option Five, which is to leave the guidelines as-is. Those guidelines that we have now have clear standards for behavior, for what lessee could not engage in, in impeding workers from organizing. Even when we're looking at Option Four, which is the current motion plus this independent arbiter, I guess, who would be a non-political body if I'm summarizing accurately, in that case, you know, I certainly would welcome to hear staff's opinions as to who might serve as an independent non-political body, but that process itself is still not defined. I don't, how we define that, I think, you know, in my mind, I don't see a way to give that clear standards until it has operated for many years and incurred a lot of cost and uncertainty, and imposed some meaningful risks on our lessies. So, you know, those requirements don't meet the standards that I'd be looking for, to have clear standards and low or no-cost administration to all parties. And in the, you know, just kind of moving up the list to the first few of the options in the staff report, they kind of become even more fraught with establishing guidelines. As Councilmember McEwen, it's definitely not the kind of thing that we want to get into, into dictating just what those LPAs ought to include. All of these things begin to get into much more fraught categories and away from what I think we ought to be doing, which is establishing clear standards for behavior for the businesses that we do business with.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Does the motion include the staff recommendation that food service carts and outdoor dining licenses be exempted?
Yes.
Thanks for the clarification. I tend to lean towards Item Five, Option Five. I think Councilmember O'Day really expressed some of my concerns there, and let's continue with Option Five. I am concerned about the problems that may come up, and unintended consequences of moving along with Option Four with its, even with this neutral arbitration.
The mayor Protem has kindly allowed me to jump in ahead of her, so I'm going to share my thoughts. I share the concerns we've heard from these small independent businesses, that we still haven't defined what would be the terms of a labor peace agreement. And even the school district language, while it says it must have a no-strike pledge, it's silent on what everything else in a labor peace agreement contains. And I actually prefer pursuing the option where we actually develop a template, and we have some clarity for people on both sides about exactly what a labor peace agreement should contain. So I can't support the motion that's currently moved, because I just think it opens up this gigantic black hole of uncertainty, where you go into your lessee and go into negotiations at a labor peace agreement, you don't really know what to anticipate. And it makes it very hard for small businesses, as we heard, to plan ahead about what sort of increased regulatory or financial burdens they might be placing upon themselves by entering into this labor peace agreement. I just think that the lack of specificity is a real problem in the direction we're headed. I'm all for making sure that we have labor peace, and we have continued revenue streams from our businesses we lease to on our public lands, but I just think that there's serious challenges in the direction we're headed, that even with the outlet of, you know, the safety valve of an appeal, if you're, if I'm the appellant body, whoever I am, a hearing officer, you know, an arbitrator, et cetera, how can I tell whether or not the two sides are negotiating good faith when there's not any terms about what ought to be the basis for the negotiation in good faith? So I would much prefer to go, I think, with Option Two or Three. I don't have them up there on the screen anymore, but the one where we provide at least some sort of template for what an LPA would look like. Mayor Protem Davis.
Well, I think that's an interesting concept. I wanted to start out and buzzed back in, because I'm sympathetic to what councilmembers O'Connor and O'Day said. My concern is that, under the current labor peace agreement, we have exactly what we didn't want to have have, which is the picketing at the Spitfire Grill. And we heard from the owner and people who work there that it had a negative impact on business. And my concern is that if we just stick with the current system that doesn't make some sort of exaction from the union, or the representative body, whomever that might be, that has to engage in the labor peace agreement, we could see more of that. And ultimately, it would have a negative impact on the revenues that we'd begin to realize from operations on city land. And so I think that while it may be that up till this point, Option Five has been working okay, it's quite possible that it's not going to work okay in the future, and that's the eventuality that I think we need to address. I also very much agree with the mayor that it's the uncertainty, I think, that scares everybody. Nobody likes uncertainty, and certainly when it's your livelihood at stake, it becomes quite serious. I don't know, and maybe this is something with the guidance we can give staff, is do we have to come up with a template, or when staff brings this back, can there be some very broad guidelines about what might be in a labor peace agreement, so people understand what might be there, but without the city dictating the terms? I think that's the sort of no-man's land that we get into, because what might work at one establishment doesn't work at another, and I'm not sure it's the city's purview, even though we have a strong interest in protecting our revenues, to really set forth what each individual business should or should not do. So I think, I don't know if there's a hybrid in there, or whatever, but it seems to me that maybe that's something we can give direction. Obviously, Councilmember McEwen made the motion, and I seconded it, but I think within that motion, there might be room to have staff, when it returns with this item, set forth some of the things that might be included in a labor peace agreement, so that people get some idea about specifically what we're talking about, without making it a requirement, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Councilmember McEwen.
Well, I'm going to ask a couple of questions of staff right now, tonight, in a good-faith effort to navigate us between Silla and Charybdis here, and I'll start with Silla, which is the template. My worry there is, the moment we start to define what labor peace ought to be, we are treading on the toes of the National Labor Relations Act. So let me ask of legal staff, suppose we set this up with a non-political body that was looking at whether the discussions had been arbitrary or capricious, the demands were unreasonable, would they not be able to look at federal labor law to decide whether things were arbitrary or capricious? Do we locally have to try to reinvent a body of law that has been written at the federal level?
I don't believe we would. We certainly could look at all options if we were looking at that model, if that's the direction you wanted to go.
So avoiding trying to define it locally, I think, would steer us away from Silla, which is the danger of trying to write a template that conflicts with federal law. And then Charybdis, the concerns that Councilmember O'Day had about the cost of this, can staff suggest any ways that we could craft Option Four in a way that kept the cost down, that kept it as simple as possible?
I suppose that we could put a time limit. We could set not a template for the content of the labor peace agreement, which you've raised concerns about, but we could set a template for how the negotiations might proceed. You know, you must meet three times, and you must, you know, there certainly are precedents in labor law. I don't know them, but I'm sure our city attorney's office has access to them, about what constitutes fair bargaining, whether they exist in federal law, which is what you're seeking to be in accordance with. Again, I would defer to the city attorney's office. But I don't know that beyond that, we could address the issue of the uncertainty, which is what also has a dollar cost, which is you have to then get either very sophisticated negotiators or very skilled labor lawyers to navigate between the two extremes you've posed.
But we could then, it sounds like, set rules for the process and the timeline, where we wouldn't be interfering with federal labor law, we wouldn't be saying what the agreement had to say, we'd just be saying, get to it, folks, you know, this is a limited-time process, there are certain things you're obligated to do, that would remove some of the uncertainty. Now people are going into this, not even knowing, well, how do we meet? Who do we meet with? What do we do? We could build a structure within which the negotiation for the terms of the labor peace agreement would be out of our hands, but we would determine a process. I hope we would be able to do that. The reason why I characterize Option Five as Charybdis is because frankly, that won't stop the problem we have, is the disruption of revenue. The rules we have now don't address that. They had their purpose, but the guarantee of ongoing revenue wasn't one of them, and I think the reason we're meeting here tonight is to figure out how to protect city revenue.
Mr. Cole, you're in the queue.
I am. Well, I guess it was to answer.
All right. Councilmember O'Connor.
Councilmember McEwen's question.
So maybe we should just get out of such agreements. You know, there's a fine line between protesting for justice and when it starts to approach bullying, and with the purpose of possibly driving small independent businesses out of business. And if the problem with Number Five is that it's going to say to whoever the organized labor entity is, that if you are loud enough, if you are out there trying to drive someone out of business, you're going to be rewarded. So I'm actually now leaning towards saying, questioning whether we should even have a labor peace provision in any lease.
Councilmember Hemmerich.
So maybe I'm a little confused. This is a study session, so what we're doing is, we're giving staff our thoughts about what direction it ought to take, and then they're going to come back to us after looking at the issue in more depth, including all of the legal ramifications, the practical ramifications, and what it means going forward, and give us options. So, you know, we're now acting as if we're making a final decision, where I think that despite the motion, what we're really trying to do is give staff a sense of what direction we want to move, and there may be different ways of threading the needle. Am I right?
I think a motion just makes it easier for staff to count opinions. To be more clear on what the consensus is.
The motion is a specific direction and what to come back with.
But it sounds like it's slipping, and that's why I'm asking this.
Oh, I don't think directions slip. They sometimes expand, and that may be what's happening.
Well, okay, so I think that when I talked about outreach and setting the parameters of what we were expecting of people, and now we're talking about having a rulebook for that, I would be more inclined to say, let's set parameters, and less inclined to set rules, which seems to me to be more intrusive on the whole process.
If I can clarify, Mayor, I certainly never said that there should be rules. I talked about having an established process. I think our hands should be completely off what is negotiated between the negotiated parties.
Oh, so you said mayor, I thought you were talking to Ted.
No, I asked for mayor's permission to speak, because I'm not in the queue. But I wanted to respond to your apparent question, which is whether my motion had now included the idea of setting rules for what the parameters of an agreement should be. Absolutely not.
Okay.
I just want to set a process for how the agreement might be moved forward in a reasonable timeframe.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yeah, I guess my difficulty with this concept is to establishing a template for the negotiation or for the process itself, for the negotiated agreement or for the negotiation process itself, is that it doesn't feel like it has an end, to me, ever. I mean, even with the suggestion that Mr. Cole made related to, well, you have to meet three times, for example, or the standard that you might have to be negotiating in good faith, or this capricious or arbitrary concept, they all require some determination in the end, and in the end, a sort of, you know, having been around this long enough and hearing the, you know, the debates over leases and negotiations, there's always a he and a she, and they always say something different. And so we, no matter how much we try to define this, there will be an uncertainty to the process that leads ultimately to a judgment by some external body as to, you know, who was right and who was wrong. And I find it hard to believe that we could not get into those very specific determinations that Councilmember McEwen, you're saying you want to stay away from. You know, particularly in the given environment, without any standards, we certainly don't have it. And it kind of brings me back to, okay, so, you know, am I willing to go down that path and to try to figure that out, and, you know, even assuming that we could get to some space that had some mitigated degree of exposure on risk and cost for our lease business? Then it brings me back to ask, well, what's wrong with now? Right? Which is what a couple of the council members now have said, that this example of the Spitfire is the, is the what's wrong with now, that the clear standards that an employer could not engage in obstructive behavior against organizing employees doesn't work, has led to, what I heard, was four protests in front of the Spitfire during the lunch hour that led to about $4,000 disruption of revenue for the Spitfire from us as a lessor. That represents, I don't know what the take is on the revenue for the city on the leases in this example for the Spitfire, but more broadly, maybe on average, it's 10%. So $400 impact for those four protests to the city?
The, to answer the question as to kind of the city's lease revenue as opposed to the business revenue, in this case, Spitfire is one of the tenants that does not have a percentage rent, they just pay a base rent. So there isn't a direct correlation of that loss of business revenue in context to city participation to that lessee.
So it's only if this were to lead to an actual disruption in the business, so substantial that the business went under?
Correct.
And thereby defaulted on its lease, and that the city couldn't recover whatever balance due was on that lease for the remaining term?
Correct. That would be the most extreme.
That the city could face any exposure at all in this instance.
Correct.
It brings me back to the what are we trying to solve here? We've spent more than $400, more than $4,000 tonight already on this work. And so it just doesn't feel, you know, this feels like a very uncertain possibility of resolving this in a way that addresses the need we're after, and we've got a pretty clear standard set already.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Well, I fear maybe we're veering into legislating as opposed to giving direction, because I think we are getting pretty specific about what we may or may not be looking for. I think when this comes back, I'm going to try and take it back to giving I think when this comes back, I'm going to try and take it back to giving direction, because nobody's voting on anything about what we're going to do tonight. We're voting on what we're asking staff to bring back. And again, I'm sympathetic to this, you know, what problem are we solving? And it may not be a problem that has manifested itself to any great degree in the past, but it apparently has the potential to manifest itself to a significant degree in the future. And I think that's, you know, we're trying to be, I think, somewhat forward-looking here. I also think, and, you know, this was said before, but I think it's important to understand that a labor, we can't, as a council, require unionization. So a labor peace agreement would never be, you have to unionize. So, for example, if one of our local businesses, what we heard from some of the employees, and they were truly a family and had a great relationship with the owner, and they took a vote on unionization, they might actually vote no. And the labor peace agreement would still say there can't be any picketing, but there also wouldn't be a union at the establishment. And so I don't, I just want to make that point clear, that this is about, from my perspective anyway, you know, trying to avoid what happened at the Spitfire happening on a recurring basis, because maybe at the Spitfire, because it's not a percentage lease, it doesn't affect us in the short term. But if it makes it hard for, you know, if we continue having picketing there, or at one of the establishments on the promenade or on the beach, you know, it does start to have a cumulative impact. So I guess in the idea of direction, what I would like to hear when this comes back, and I know we haven't voted on the quote-unquote "motion" yet, but when this comes back, is if there are, in fact, sort of standards at the NLRB, or maybe it's the Department of Fair Employment and Housing in California, I'm not quite sure who, but that there are some standards that we could look at, that somebody who was looking at this as a third party would say, okay, you know, here's, here's a bridge too far, or here's what's unreasonable, or here's evidence of bad faith, that sort of thing. So I'd like to hear that when that comes back, because...
That's friendly to the maker of the motion.
Yeah, because I just think, like many people in the room, we're sort of fumbling our way through the dark here without knowing that. And then I think it also goes to the issue that Councilmember McEwen raised about what are our limits, or what would be the advisability of trying to put some process requirements on it, so that it doesn't become horribly expensive to the business. I think that the concern some of the businesses have, although it wasn't necessarily expressed out in the open here, but I've heard it behind the scenes, is, well, now I have to go hire a labor lawyer, and they're going to charge me $500 an hour, and they're going to engage in these, you know, while I'm still trying, I don't even have a lease until this gets set. So I think if there are some limitations we can put on it to reduce the cost to all the parties involved, but will still not be illegal, or, you know, or increase our risk too much, I think that's something to look at, so that we can be sensitive to the issue that it's not just the cost to the city, but the cost to the parties involved. But I think that whether we like it or not, we have to do something. And I know that's unfortunate. I think a lot of people in this room are going, I'm not sure why. But I think if we were to start to see informational picketing, you know, on the promenade or at the beaches, I said, I think that we'd all realize that perhaps we needed to take action then, and that may well be coming. So having said that, you know, there are some things I want to see when this comes back, before we make a final decision. I just, I don't feel like we're ma, I think it's important for us not to feel like we're making a final decision tonight, because we're not, even though we're talking in fairly concrete terms.
Councilmember Hemrich.
So I have a question with the city attorney, or maybe Mr. Harris. In our staff report, there was other cities that were cited that actually had included certain specifics in their labor peace agreements, where there's a requirement for a card check agreement or something like that. So what precludes us from creating not rules, but guidelines about what might be in a labor peace agreement, so that at least on both sides of the aisle, there's some clarity? I'm still concerned that, for instance, if we're going for something that's modeled on what the school district did, that, that was fine, because they were dealing with one large hospitality corporate chain, which had the wherewithal to deal with all of the lawyer requirements, financial requirements, time delays incurred by negotiation. We're talking about, and our city on land, small businesses, which, as we've heard often, both from the public and on the dice, don't have the resources to engage in these, you know, protracted negotiations, and have to make the financial decision before they leap into a new lease, whether or not they can incur those additional costs. I just am troubled that we're not providing greater clarity on what is entailed in this. So given that there are other cities who've done this, and apparently, at least at this point, there's been no legal challenges, why could we not have, not rules, not regulations, but guidelines is what we anticipate?
So looking at the examples provided from the other cities, I think that some of those are requiring not a no-strike provision like the school district did, but a card check agreement, for example. And so in some ways, I think that is a different definition. It's just a different variation of the labor peace agreement. I don't know whether any of these are providing a long set of requirements, but we certainly can look into that, and certainly would look at other models, to the extent the desire was to provide more guidance there.
All right. Well, you know, I would like to vote for the motion, but I'm still troubled by this, so I will propose a friendly amendment, which I suspect will not be friendly, with it, we, when staff comes back with this, that they take a look at the possibility of having some sort of guidelines about what exactly a labor peace agreement would look like.
I will surprise you, but I hope not shock you, by saying that that is friendly.
All right.
But my understanding is that that's very dangerous territory, and I hope we enter it with caution.
My middle name is Danger, but that's... Is that friendly to the secondar?
It is friendly, though.
It is friendly to the secondar, and I think it's important information to have when we do get around to making a final decision about what the legal risks might be and what we can and cannot do.
And then my second friendly amendment is, to the extent that, one of our other concerns is we're seeing increasing vacancies on privately-owned property around the city, is that that is disruptive to sort of the fabric of the street. Did you get enough vacancies, and people start to think what's wrong there, right? And in the interest of keeping city-owned properties occupied, if, I would just like to suggest that we take a look at that. If we had a vacancy, where a longtime tenant had left for whatever reason, and another tenant was looking at that space, that we might allow, without a labor peace agreement, for a period of two or three months, pop-up tenancies, so that we kept the storefronts activated.
The challenge there, I think, is that for a business to move into a location owned by the city, there are going to be tenant improvements, and there's a huge commitment of capital for a restaurant to hire staff and do all of that, so...
We see that in the private sector, just short-term pop-up tenancies, where someone goes in, and there's...
So you're saying they move in, that they have no lease, and they could be selling Halloween gifts.
Exactly.
At Halloween, that sort of thing.
So that we keep...
So it wouldn't be a restaurant use, it'd be some other use to keep the space...
Yeah, it could be.
I'm happy to explore that.
I just think that we ought to, but the city attorney looks like she has a thought on it.
I just want to be careful to be sure that we stay on the agendized item.
All right.
Pop-up Halloween shops, apparently, were not on the agenda.
But this is a pop-up restaurants in restaurant space, or a new thing.
You see them around town. You see them throughout the region. We could be specific to this, just for food service businesses.
I'm happy to add the question to the list of things we're asking staff to explore when it comes back. I think I'd have some concerns, but I certainly am not closed to having information, so yes.
All right.
How many, how many friendly amendments do you have, Mayor?
That was it.
Oh, good.
I was going to wrap it up. I have some hostile amendments. No, no.
Councilmember O'Day.
Well, I have a suggestion. I mean, that line of discussion, and the, and the fact that we heard that, you know, there wasn't a disruption to city revenue from the picketing, suggests to me, maybe there are other strategies to assure city, the city's ongoing revenues from these last season. While I think the staff report was very good, and did very good work of considering everything in an LPA, are there other strategies that the staff can bring back to us, like limiting our exposure in revenue, license revenue? What is the term for your, when we get a share of the restaurant's proceeds?
Trip on that, our percentage.
The percentage.
Percentage rent versus a base rent.
Yeah, limiting our exposure in percentage rent would be a meaningful strategy to affect our, to protect our ongoing revenue stream, for example, right, from these types of disruptions. Are there other strategies like that, financial strategies, legal strategies, that the staff could provide us?
Yeah. Councilmember McEwen.
I always wait for the mayor's permission to speak, see. That's interesting additional information. I don't think it deals with the issue that was put before us by the motion made by the mayor and others back in March, which is that we wanted to look at labor peace. Again, I'm someone who actually loves having more information, so I'm happy to have staff explore that. I personally don't think that replaces labor peace, but anything that we can do to help stabilize city revenue is probably a good idea in the challenging years ahead. I think there's a reason why we do percentage leases. I think it gets the city more revenue than we would otherwise, and so we might be giving up more than we're gaining, but I'd love to hear about that, sure. I'm afraid we're now getting toward about a 3,000-page staff report and a lot of work for staff, so I hope we don't just keep adding ornaments on the tree.
I do have to ask one question, though. Did you have, in your, when you made the motion, any concept of a employee-sized threshold to which this would apply?
I didn't. And if staff recommends something, again, I'm interested in information, my concern with that would be that you end up with the manipulation of the size of the staff, and how many people are full-time as opposed to part-time. What wasn't discussed tonight, and it's not on the agenda, I'll just mention it in passing, is that there's a dynamic where restaurants try to not have too many people who are full-time, because they get more benefits than people who are part-time. So there are many, many dynamics that go into how many employees there are. And I would think that if we come up with a good policy, which I hope we do, that it will be scalable to almost any size operation.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Well, I just want to say, I did ask that question, and Mr. Harris answered it by saying there didn't appear to be any manipulation among the businesses as to the number of employees, because they were, actually had more part-time and could have gotten under the number by using full-time. So I think that's something that's having, worth having staff look at. I would agree with the mayor, that I think that that's worth having staff at least take a peek at and seeing, is there some threshold that makes sense?
Let me turn to staff and say, is this something that staff can handle, in the context of what we started out doing, which was a labor peace direction?
Well...
I've sat here saying yes to information all night, but I know you've got to produce it.
Yeah. No, I mean, the, everything comes at a cost. I'm not talking about a financial cost. I'm talking about, you have a lot of important issues on behalf of the community that you're expecting us to process. The more complicated it gets, the more difficult it is to balance the city attorney's workload, and Housing and Economic Development Department and City Manager's Office workload. So I think what you've proposed now is doable. We'll give us a couple months to bring it back. The reality is, we're, the answers to these questions are going to raise more questions.
They always do. Then I'm comfortable with how much we've put into this, and I hope we don't add more, and can go to a vote pretty soon.
All right. Well, I suppose we're ready for at least some sort of vote on this. Councilmember McEwen, Mayor Pro Tem Davis, would you like to summarize the motion for us at the best of your abilities?
Well, it's based on option four, with the change that the decision on what's arbitrary and capricious will be turned over to some non-political entity, that we will monitor what the impact of this has been over time, that we will have some attempt at making standards for the process on this, that we will try to come up with a process that limits the expense to the parties trying to get leases, and that we will look for additional information as asked for by various council members.
Does that sound right to you?
Right. Specifically, you know, what might be a source of a determination, what might be that standard for arbitrary and capricious, and also the question of whether or not it makes sense to impose some minimum applicability in terms of number of employees.
All right. I suppose for, we could normally do this by voice vote, but I think for clarity, we ought to do a roll call vote.
So the maker was McEwen, and the secondar was Mayor Pro Tem, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember McEwen?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
No.
Councilmember O'Connor?
No.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes. So that direction is approved five to two. And with that, we will move on to the next item.